Please rise to the pledge. Pledge of the oath.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call.
Councilmember Erby here. Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger here. Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember Trachis.
Rosie.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
I move for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of November 7th, 2017.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. The Journal from November 7th, 2017 is approved. We have no bid opening, so we'll move to Communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises this evening, so I'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number 1, 6th District.
Receive file and hold on to order of business, please.
So ordered.
We have nothing under road and bridge matters this evening, Mr. Chair, so I'll move to other communications. Under other communications, item number 1.
Receive file and county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion, Friday, number 2. So ordered.
Item number 3, 5th District.
Receive file and the criteria for an election on the petition having been met, the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation to call for such an election.
So ordered.
Item number 4, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation with my application.
So ordered.
Item number 5, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 6, 2nd District.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 7, 6th and 7th Districts.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Should we read the add-ons?
Item number 1, all districts.
Receive file and refer to the committee, the whole, and that will be the order.
Item number 2, 2nd District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 3, 2nd District.
Receive, file, and refer to the county executive, and that will be the order. Let's see. County Executive report.
Nothing further this evening.
Special Committee reports, nothing to report. Public forum.
We have 14 speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Please come to the podium when your name's called and give your name and address for the record. We ask that you try to keep your comments to three minutes. And, uh, first speaker.
First speaker is Lynn LeBeau.
Yes, yeah, bring the microphone down, please. Thank you.
Like a midget. Good evening, County Council. As Americans, we are born into joyous freedom. We don't know any other type of government. We cherish freedom of speech, assembly, and religion. We prize a free press and the right to bear arms. Our individual and collective freedoms are rare and sacred in this world, envied by many. As believers, we're born again into spiritual liberty, doubly blessed by our American and Christian heritage. In both the founding of our country and the genesis of Christianity, great sacrifice was made for us to enjoy our liberty. Our founding fathers warned we must responsibly keep our Constitution. The Bible stirs us to keep God's laws. In these difficult days, both sets of laws are a refuge, for us individually and for our nation. If we use our liberty as a license to just do as we please, we ultimately destroy its essence. More than ever, we need to be stirred to the perfect law of liberty so that our nation can flourish and we can live in the fullness of God's promises and the liberty in which our founding fathers intended. I thank our veterans, also our first responders and police, as well as our employees. We need to keep our community safe and our nation safe as well. I would like to see the county council to be diligent and mindful in how you spend our dollars, not your dollars. They're not your, it's not your money. It's our money. We request that you stop spending foolishly for your own pay to play politics. Be good stewards so that you can pay the people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Al Baldwin.
Hi, I'm James Baldwin. I'm a retired security officer after 28 and a half years. I'm just here to talk to you a little bit about the disparity in the pay raises that are coming. Don't get me wrong, I, I, I don't hold a grudge for the police officers to get 30%, but I think that the security officers deserve more than a 3%. We are, um, we go to the same in-service classes with the police academy. We get the same training. We have to train and qualify with a sidearm, a taser, a baton, the Aspaton, and, and, um, a mace or pepper spray. We, um, constantly we're training and doing everything the police officers do. We're working side by side. We've got the same responsibilities and we have to follow the same standards. And, I mean, it's almost like we're getting held to maybe a higher standard than when you hear "security officer" and you think of whaling security on a Segway rolling through the food court. I, I think that they deserve, and it doesn't affect me. Um, I think that they deserve more recognition as far as a pay increase. I don't think that they would expect a 30% increase, but I think that they would at least like something more. When we work side by side, we are expected to, um, in, in my years, I was here May 6th of 92, when Ken Baumert shot several people in the courthouse, to include one of our security officers. I've, I've put out myself two fires here at the Government Center. We're expected to run into a, a, um, active shooter scene, just as the police officers are. And I, I think that they deserve better. And it, that's probably as far as I can go without saying too much. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Marie Heiple.
All right, uh, as you know, you guys passed the commission, police officers' pay raise. I appreciate that. The professional staff, employees of the county police department weren't included in that pay raise. And, uh, security officers believe that, based on our job duties, our responsibilities, and our performance, we should be considered for that pay, for a pay raise. Uh, while it's apparent that the Prop P tax revenue should be used for increased salaries for police officers, I believe that the Bureau of Security Services has been ignored when it comes to pay raises because they fall into a professional staff category unlike any in the county. We perform a public safety function solely at our designated posts. We serve as public safety officers mainly on Clayton. No, nowhere else. We have no authority outside of our buildings, only inside. Over the past three years, we have been given added checkpoints to operate. We've been given updated equipment and more training to go with all that. While the work environment has changed, we remain in one of the lowest pay ranges within the department. Due to the nature of our position, the potential for the use of force or injury is more probable and more likely just from what we do. Starting in 2010, we were also given our guns back. Our duties, expectations, and training increased. Even then, a job reclassification didn't occur. We are expected to perform all the same duties of commissioned police officer with limited arrest powers, but none of us had a commission. We're expected to handle everything a police officer handles: disturbances, peacekeeping, providing public safety in our buildings. When the public sees us, they don't see a security officer. They see another police officer. They just see different shirts. It makes no difference to them. We assume the same risks. We also train together in tactics. We do active shooter training here at the courthouse and other buildings. We do, we deal with mental health issues on a day-to-day basis. And we have to employ de-escalation maneuvers all the time. So, to get hired as a security officer, we go through the same background investigation. We go through the same hiring process, same, same things. We fill out the same application. We just write "security officer" instead of "police officer." The police officers, also the ones we work with, they expect the same of a security officer than they do another officer that they work on the street with. But at the end of the day, we consider it a privilege to work for the county. And all we're asking is to be compensated fairly by the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Chris Egan.
Hello, thank you for your time. My name is Chris Egan. I'm a case manager with Department of Justice Services. I've been there 27 years. And, um, I want to speak to the pay raises and the disparity. Case managers are not included in the increase as the officers are. And I want you to know, in 27 years, one thing that has remained constant is I have worked hand-in-hand with officers. I back them up, they back me up. We are required to have bachelor's degrees. We are considered a promotion, our position, from a corrections officer position. And the case managers here, 99% of them, were corrections officers. This is going to mix things up by increasing the pay for the officers and not increasing our pay to the same extent. We have daily inmate contact. Many case managers have more contact with inmates than the, the officers do. We classify inmates when they come in the jail to determine where they're housed, if they're suicidal, drug-related. We are assigned to, uh, we have caseloads of 216 inmates per case manager. We provide intervention, prevention, counseling, and case management services to current inmates inside the jail and also to over 450 former inmates supervised in one of our programs. There's numerous programs. I currently work in our community corrections. Community corrections is public safety. I deal with people on probation. We're the ones that notify the judge when someone violates their probation, particularly DWIs. They don't know that someone's incurred a new arrest. We are the ones that go to court and talk to the judge and get the person back in jail if need be or into treatment. We supervise 5,000 offenders that are either on our probation or, um, in their mental health court. We're the ones, and I am in the mental health court, that deal with individuals that are mentally ill that need services. We hook them up with services and to keep them out of the jail. If it wasn't for us, the jail would be overloaded. Pre-trial release program, we're the ones that monitor people that are out on the street. We have, um...
That's three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Can you just finish up for us?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Betty Barnes.
And again, thank you for your time, for having us. Um, I'm a case manager supervisor for the St. Louis County Justice Department. Um, I've been there 21 years and, like my partner said, I was a correction officer and a lieutenant. I've been working, I did 17 years in corrections and I've only been a case manager for five. So, um, I've looked up the definition of a public safety officer because I know this is all about Prop P and about public safety. Public safety officer or a law enforcement officer, firefighter, a member of the rescue squad or ambulance crew, chaplain, fire department, police department. Law enforcement officers are included but not limited to police, corrections, probation officer, parole and justice officers. As a case manager in the Department of Justice Service, we assure that the Justice Service mission statement is carried out. And we do that by working hand-in-hand with the correction officers. As Chris mentioned, our pre-trial program, we have over 400 people on there. Getting those people out of jail helps with the crimes of the jail. That helps the correction officer. It keeps down fights and, um, it keeps down officers being injured. Uh, we get people, we get people out of the hospital. It helps with the county picking up their bill in the hospital. Um, we, we strive to make our clients better persons by providing the tools necessary to participate in educational and vocational opportunities. We do our part for the opiate epidemic. We have an in-house drug treatment program. That's an excellent program. It's a 90-day program. It's called Choices. We do our part in keeping with the epidemic. We do random drug testing, um, for the DWI court. We do random drug testing for, um, people as a condition of bond. We do it for probation. We do our part. We, we, we make, we, we, um, send people to treatment programs. We make sure, we monitor these programs. We make sure people are getting treatment. Our mental health department, we make sure they're getting their treatment. They're going to the doctor. They're taking their medicine. We meet with them every week. Um, every week, we meet with the mental health department and we make sure, we have clients come in. We make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do. Um, we have a non-support reentry program. We've collected hundreds of thousands of dollars for non-support. We get those people out of jail. That helps again with the population. We have in-home detention, GPS. That's another thing. That's another program that we have that get those violent offenders out of jail. And we monitor them. We keep up with them. Uh, my time is up. I thank you for your time and that's all I wanted to tell you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Deborah Lang.
Good evening, County Council. My name is Deborah Lang. I have been with Department of Justice Services for over 20 years and the office service representative for the housing unit floors, which is five floors. I come into the secure perimeter of the jail every day riding the elevator with inmates. My office is located on the maximum, maximum security floor of the jail where every day I come into contact with murderers, rapists, robbers, et cetera, that have been back and forth to prison. My life is in danger every day I come to work. When I first became an office service representative, there was a secretary on all five floors in the jail. Due to the consistent budget cuts and the consolidation of jobs, I am the only one that remains. My job consists of working for five unit managers, preparing and entering the schedules for five floors weekly onto the Microsoft Word and onto the IJMS where the changes are made to the schedules constantly by the unit managers. I email and distribute schedules to the lieutenants and watch commanders weekly, submit work orders to Public Works daily for all the housing unit floors, order supplies for all the housing unit floors, work the receptionist desk weekly, prepare files and attendance logs and make mailboxes for all the new officers, retrieve the meter readings for all copy machines and printers for all the housing unit floors. I have tried on several occasions to get my job reclassified, but to no avail. Now I'm being told that we are only getting 3% raise, which is unfair when we haven't received a raise in 10 years. With all the jobs that I'm doing, I feel I deserve more than a 3% raise. Thank you, councilmembers, for your time and consideration.
Next, I'm sorry. Next speaker is Sharonica Todd.
Hello, good evening. I'm a little nervous, excuse me. My name is Sharonica Todd and I have 18 years with St. Louis County. I am here to speak on behalf of all, all office service reps and support staff. When being considered for salary increase for the Proposition P funds, the function of the support staff position at Justice Service is critical to the safe operation of the jail. We work one-on-one with lawyers, judges, probation, and parole officers to make sure that all clients and/or inmates are booked and processed. We make sure that all transports and release are correct. We assist case managers, unit managers, and the public with everyday functions. We prepare schedules, time sheets, and families with visits. Some of us is required to work weekends, holidays, nights as essential personnel. I would like to thank you for your time and this is why we would like to be considered for more than a 3% increase.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Andrew Weston.
Thank you for having me. My name is Andrew Weston and I reside in the 5th District in South County. I'm a civilian employee of the St. Louis County Police Department. I've been employed here for 12 years as a chemist in the crime laboratory. And I'm here tonight representing the Police Crime Laboratory. The Police Crime Laboratory is a technical unit performing analysis on cases ranging from drug possession to capital crimes and everything in between. Every day, we perform work that will one, that we will one day have to present in a courtroom representing the St. Louis County Police Department. All the analytical positions require a bachelor's degree in a natural science or advanced coursework in the analyst's discipline. In addition to the educational requirements, the training program often takes years to complete. Most other professional staff cannot claim such specific educational requirements or duty responsibilities. A number of years ago, the members of the Police Crime Laboratory identified a problem with the pay structure of the unit. That problem was confirmed with the 2013 pay study. The scientists of the Police Crime Lab are paid on average 68% of the market average for a forensic scientist, the lowest average of any position, of any police department position used in the study. The scientists of the Police Crime Laboratory, whose training can take years to complete and cost thousands of dollars, are paid on the same scale as the administrative assistants in the chief's office. Through collective bargaining, the Police Crime Lab submitted a solution to the pay problem as a pay matrix nearly two years ago. We were always told there wasn't money to fund any paid corrections for anyone due to the recession. The bargain, uh, relief came this year in the form of Proposition P and it was sold as a fix to the pay issues of the police department. The bargaining unit rejoiced as we now had a funding source to the pay solution we had presented. There is no way to properly express the disappointment and frustration experienced when the proposed budget was posted and our solution was all but ignored. The scientists of the Police Crime Laboratory all possess degrees in a science, typically chemistry or biology. We all realized we could go work in the private sector for a company like Monsanto or Sigma Aldrich or Anheuser-Busch and make almost twice as much money. But the scientists of the Police Crime Laboratory have a sense of service and duty that compels us to use our skills, knowledge, and training to serve and support the citizens of St. Louis County. Personally, I have some milestones coming up to celebrate. Next week, my wife and I welcome our second child. And next February, I get to celebrate the 10-year anniversary of the last time I received a merit raise. I love my job. I love the sense of service and duty and the responsibilities that come with it. There is job satisfaction that accompanies this career that cannot be described. I am doing what I've wanted to do since I first picked up a book on forensic anthropology when I was 15 years old.
That's three minutes, Mr. Chair.
Just try and wrap up.
But every week, I have to answer my wife's question of how much longer I'm willing to fight for myself and the bargaining unit of the Police Crime Laboratory. I do not want to leave this career. I love what I do for the citizens of St. Louis County. But without some change, this career will become too inequitable and the county will lose qualified scientists and the thousands of dollars they have invested in them in training that cannot be easily replaced with a departmental transfer. Uh, thank you for your time. I look forward to any future discussions we can have on our pay proposal and I welcome any visitors to lab to see the laboratory in person.
I have a question.
Sure.
What is the percentage of the raise that's being proposed for you?
A percentage? I don't know it off the top of my head. I have a flat dollar amount, though, for all the bargaining unit members. But percentage-wise, it varies per person because there's a, uh, experience component built into it. But I have a flat dollar amount.
I have a question.
Yes.
Did anyone, security guards, I know you wouldn't know probably about the security guard, ask to be included in that bill that we passed? For the police officers?
Ask to be included in the Proposition P bill?
Not that bill, no. The bill that we passed last, I don't know, a week or two ago. Did you ask, because someone gave us a definition of public safety officers. Since some of you are clearly public safety officers, did anyone petition the chief or the county executive or whomever to be included in that definition when the bill was drafted?
Uh, when the bill was drafted, everything we've submitted and proposed, we've gone through our collective bargaining process.
Okay.
Can I make a comment on that? Wouldn't that, that would be their supervisor. Their supervisor should be the one who requested that you be included and at a reasonable rate in comparison to what the police officers are getting, I would think. I think that that's a failure on the part of your supervisors. That's my opinion. Sorry, I'm just being honest.
Which collective bargaining unit, FOP then? We're 3-1-11. We represent the crime lab.
I mean, just to be honest, I didn't know there was so many security guards. I thought there were like a few at the entrances. I didn't know it was a whole, that many. And then, of course, your job, case managers. I was not aware of these different positions under public safety. And I really can't understand why, especially security guards. And if she says case managers started off as, um, correction officers, why they were not included anyway?
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is Julie Cronable.
Good evening, County Councilmembers. My name is Julie Cronable and I am a resident of the 2nd District. I have worked next door at police headquarters for five and a half years now as a forensic chemist, a civilian position, and I'm here tonight representing all members of the Police Crime Laboratory. I'm sure most of you think of the CSI shows when you hear forensics. We are that, but much more. We are not just a show. We are a vital asset to this police department and to the county's public safety. The Police Crime Lab provides cost-free services to all of St. Louis County, including 90-plus county municipalities, major case squad, and federal agencies such as FBI, DEA, and ATF. We provide training to law enforcement throughout the region plus provide community outreach and education. The scientists that work in the Police Crime Lab all possess a bachelor's degree or higher, undergo continued education and training to stay current with respective disciplines, and operate under high accreditation standards that go above and beyond that of police accreditation. With our daily operations, we handle hazardous materials to include altered firearms, detrimental child pornography, semen-soaked clothing, and blood-filled syringes, which obviously carry exposures risk to diseases such as hepatitis and HIV. We are subject to on-call duties that may include advising officers over the phone on how to handle potential fentanyl cases and responding to quadruple homicides to assist with processing the scene. We are also routinely called upon to testify in municipal, state, and federal courtrooms where expert testimony is at times essential in securing convictions. Our digital forensic analysts were the only civilians to respond to active riots during the Ferguson unrest to retrieve critical digital footage. DNA analysts provided results that solved a 35-year-old cold case consisting of the abduction and homicide of a 17-year-old girl and ended in the conviction of a murderer. Drug chemists provided critical results in a federal SNCAN case that resulted in reduced K2 and Spies production and sales in the St. Louis region and even throughout the United States. Firearms and tool marks examiners identified the tires on Michael Devlin's truck in the abduction case of Sean Hornbeck and Ben Ombi, which played a significant role in the arrest and conviction. The aforementioned is a short comment of reasons why the civilians within the Police Crime Lab deserve a more compensated pay. With their impact on the public safety of this community, the recommended 3% is disappointing. We are highly trained professionals, currently only paid at 68% of the market average. We are a backbone to this police department and have job requirements that go far beyond... We are a backbone to this police department and have job requirements that go far beyond many other civilians. So I ask for all of you, in order to bring us closer to market average pay, please consider the pay plan that the police crime lab has previously proposed through collective bargaining. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tiffany Pike.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Pike. I reside in South County and I work in the police headquarters building. I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration in addressing our concerns with the professional staff raises. While any raise is truly appreciated, I believe that the Prop P funds should be used to implement a payment, implement a pay matrix for our professional staff so that new and veteran employees are not making the same salary. It also gives employees the motivation to stay with our department so that we keep skilled and experienced personnel. I've been with the department for over nine years. Seven of those years were spent in the police record room assisting in both the officers and the public. And two years have been spent in the vehicle supply unit mostly handling the department's travel requests. Both positions have given me an opportunity to work with numerous divisions of our police department and to see how each unit is necessary for our department to operate. We also, as professional staff, are the unseen, unheard backbone of our police department. Our jobs intertwine on a day-to-day basis with that of our officers. Without our officers, we have no jobs, but without us, our officers can't do their job. We are their support system every step of the way. The officers need our dispatchers, they're their lifeline, especially in times of crisis. We are the people on the other end of the line telling the officers whether their suspect has a felony warrant or a dangerous caution code. We're there to make sure their reports are entered correctly, which allows them more time on the street. We are the ones responsible for getting officers their paycheck and coordinating their benefits. The professional staff and personnel help ensure that we continue to hire the most qualified officers. We help write and improve policies to keep the department operating to the best of its abilities and help keep them held accountable to the public. We process evidence and aid in investigations every day. Our security officers in dark brown that help protect our buildings are professional staff, not police officers. We are crucial in making sure our officers have the necessary training, supplies, and equipment to do their job. During the civil unrest the past three years, our officers have continuously been put in dangerous environments. So have some of our professional staff that were stationed there and delivering necessary supplies to the officers. We also worked twelve-to-fourteen hour days during the unrest to ensure that the department continued to run as smooth as possible. We took on additional duties wherever and whenever necessary to help anyone in the department that needed it. When we put on that police logo, we are subject to similar public scrutiny and the same fear of being targeted as our officers. The reasons we joined the department vary, but we are all dedicated to the mission of this department and to serving the public. We are one department and we are one family. We are all a necessary part of making the department run as effectively and efficiently as possible. We all deserve a pay matrix under Proposition P, not just a three percent raise. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Mary Beth Ruby.
Good evening, honorable, uh, Mr. Stanger and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Mary Beth Ruby. I reside at thirteen-nineteen Hughes Place in the city of St. Louis. I have been a member of the St. Louis County Police Department for almost twenty-seven years. I served for fifteen years as a public safety dispatcher and have spent most of the rest of my career in computer services, better known as the IT department. You did not see me on the six o'clock news during the civil unrest in twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, or just a few months ago during the unrest that occurred surrounding Jason Stockley verdict. But rest assured, I, along with my colleagues, were working behind the scenes ensuring our police officers had the tools they needed when they needed the most. Technology is like housework. No one notices until you don't do it or it stops working. We are living in the age of instant and instantaneous information. Myself and my colleagues work very hard at making all the information and tools police officers and detectives need at their disposal up and running twenty-four-seven, excuse me, three-sixty-five. Like police officers and dispatchers, we too are always on call. I routinely receive calls at two AM on a Thursday or two PM on a Sunday afternoon, as do others on my team, and I've always answered that call. To date, we've handled, excuse me, we've handled over two thousand seven hundred support issues, yet we are earning significantly less than the mean salary for tech support in the metro St. Louis region. On average, most of our staff are earning twenty to thirty percent less than comparable positions in the St. Louis region. We have presented a comprehensive proposal along with the pay matrix to Ms. Frank to provide to the council one week ago, which we believe will realistically compensate and aid in retaining competent staff through these figures. Though these figures are still below the local average median salaries. Proposition P has promised funding for technology, which will include body worn cameras as well as in-car cameras. This new technology will require manpower to implement and maintain and will increase our workload significantly without providing an increase in pay for those who work to put this technology in place and maintain it. The data that our officers use to fight crime in the modern era is integral to the performance of their jobs. But behind that big data are human beings. Someone has to make sure the data gets to the right place. The officer using that website or that application has been given access and the training they need to fully utilize that particular tool. That person is me or someone else on my team. We have a highly skilled and dedicated programming staff that are making far less than they deserve. They signed on because they wanted to make a difference. We don't want this to be a stepping stone.
Can you, can you wrap up? You're running out of time.
Okay. We do not want this to be a stepping stone. The work is too important. We have over twelve hundred employees and four tier-two IT support positions. This amounts to each of us being responsible for the technology needs of about three hundred people. Uh, in closing, I would just ask that you take our dedication into consideration and let us know, you hear us, when we say that every job in St. Louis County Police Department matters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is either Allison or Alyssa. I'm not sure which, Mr. Terrence Schutak. Mr. Jok, we asked the speaker to spell her first name.
A-L-Y, S-A-N. That's the first name. And it's Allison, sorry. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. My name is Allison Schutak and my address is six-five-zero-eight Odell. I currently work in the fingerprint section as latent print examiner. On a daily basis, I examine evidence for the presence of latent prints with the ultimate goal of identifying who those prints belong to. Sometimes it is for a run-of-the-mill burglary, but more times than not is a homicide that requires our immediate attention. When an officer calls at two AM with a suspect but nothing connecting them to the case, myself and my colleagues have the ability to bridge that gap through fingerprint analysis and identification. Oftentimes, without our findings, arrest and search warrants wouldn't be granted. Testifying to our findings has become a standard part of our job that occurs often enough that we keep a suit at the ready, similar to officers being prepared with SWAT gear. If called upon, we will report to crime scenes to help process and preserve evidence. As expected, this is a less-than-ideal work environment which frequently exposes us to biohazardous conditions. Trips to the morgue are not uncommon, and we are often the first step to identifying Jane Does and John Does. When successful, we can have an answer to detectives in a matter of minutes, allowing immediate response to begin the investigation into this person's death. This also places us in a position to bring closer, closure to families who have been looking for loved ones who in some cases have been missing for years. While my focus is on evidence, there are others in my unit who focus on what happens twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. If criminals never take a break, that means that officers arresting them don't either. At the end of the arrest chain, our fingerprint technicians are responsible for ensuring that Steve Jones who was arrested is actually the Steve Jones wanted for a homicide and not the poor man who happens to share a name with a criminal. I don't know about the officers here, but I think they sleep better at night knowing fingerprint comparisons are used to support their warrant applications, confirm they have arrested the correct individual, bring closure to families. As you can imagine, I could go on and on about how hard my section works. It's easy for me to stand up here and tell you that the fingerprint section is crucial to the department and that the department couldn't get by without us, but that's not fair. It's not fair for me to advocate for a pay raise for my section alone when there are so many other sections filled with civilians that work just as hard. These sections are just as important to this department. Without them, the department wouldn't be able to function on not only a daily basis, but on an hourly basis. From the records section to the warrants office, to the laboratory, to the care unit, to security officers. These are just a few, and I could go on and on, listing the sections that are imperative to this department, but I only have three minutes. The truth of matter is, is that a police department is a team effort. Civilians rely on police officers and the police officers rely on civilians. This department needs its civilians in the sections they work in. But how are we civilians supposed to serve a department that undervalues us? That doesn't see civilians as something important enough to provide for? How do we dedicate our work and time and service to an institution that feels our service only warrants a three percent pay increase? I applied this three percent to my current salary to find out how my hourly rate would change. That outcome was sixty-eight cents. My hourly pay would increase by less than seven dimes. It would increase by less than three quarters. That doesn't seem like the department values the work I do or the work my coworkers and fellow employees do. At the end of the day, civilian or cop, we're all trying to make a living and provide for loved ones. There isn't a single civilian who wouldn't argue that the officers deserve the raises that Prop P has afforded them. We stood by their sides and supported that they will be, what will be for some officers, a life-changing pay raise. There's an opportunity here to show civilians that they are important and that they are worth the time and money. To throw away this opportunity would be a slap in the face to all those who work here. The lack of action would be a disservice to civilians and the cops who rely on them. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you take civilians into your account of your decisions. Good night.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Joe Patterson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. First, uh, let me rise in support of, uh, final passage of Bill two-eight-eight that was on the council. Um, but let me divert for a second here because I'm seeing a couple confused faces on the council. St. Louis County Police Association, of which I preside over the executive board of, has three organized bargaining units currently. First one is the police officers, which you all signed a contract in late two thousand sixteen. The one you just recently passed was for the police sergeants. And we also have the police crime laboratory, who's been involved in collective bargaining process for nearly three years. So that is the three organized bargaining units that we have. Um, as a St. Louis County taxpayer and resident, and I believe I'm in sort of, uh, agreeing with everything, everyone on the council, three percent regardless of it's a police employee or a revenue employee or a transportation employee. I mean, St. Louis County government employees in general are underpaid. Uh, the process to determine how underpaid they are is known as a collective bargaining process. So the question that we have is, you know, who, whose job is it to get to there? It's, it's the employee's job to organize a bargaining unit and have a represent, representative, whether it's the Fraternal Order of Police, the Teamsters, Ask Me, whomever their occupational labor organization would be to do that. So let me first, by saying that, we've done that three times in the police department with the police officers, the sergeants, and the crime lab. The solutions to the crime lab's problem is less than five hundred thousand dollars for next year's budget. We have a forty-six million dollar budget to play around with. I think that shouldn't be too terribly difficult to figure out, so. Um, but let me go back to my original point, that there's a, there's two items in here. There were part of Prop P that can't fill this room and can't have their voices heard because they don't have a voice. And those are the physical facilities that our police officers and civilian employees work out of in St. Louis County government. Um, ninety-nine-twenty-eight Grabaway and, uh, Councilman Trigus' district and one-one-eight-one-five Benham Road, the first precinct. And, uh, Councilwoman Michelle Walton Gray's district are two of the most antiquated, energy inefficient, and, um, very difficult to access police facilities we have in all of county government. Those buildings were poor, they were unprofessional, and they were, um, substandard ten years ago when I started in this department. I thought the county government was just a conservative government that maybe kept their things kind of plain Jane builders grade to be good stewards of the taxpayer. Um, I think that is still the case. However, these facilities are not places I would even want my own loved ones locked up in. We keep them clean, we keep them as nice as we can, but they're simply just old and outdated. Completely energy inefficient, they are privately owned buildings that were probably given out as sweetheart deals from previous administrations. We're paying rent every single month on facilities, so you're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars in years to private individuals to rent buildings that we maintain all the way down to pave in the parking lot. County government paved, paves the parking lot in those facilities. Anything that breaks inside those buildings, we fix. Lack of public restrooms, and speaking of public facilities, a complete lack, not a single space in either the first precinct station or the third precinct station for any community members to meet. We can't hold a public meeting if we wanted to in those facilities, there's just, there's no room between the police officers and their equipment. We've just completely outgrown those facilities. So, uh, the St. Louis County Police Association certainly stands in support of all of my fellow county government employees, but I also, um, want to do my due diligence and speak on behalf of two structures that can't speak and just say we, we are certainly, uh, rising in favor of final passage of Bill two-eight-eight.
That's two minutes. Can I have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
You, the first part of your speech about the raises and the Prop P and the money, and you said it's not too hard to, to, to handle or whatever you said, what did you mean by that?
What, what I mean is the thirty-six employees of the crime, I, I think there's a confusion on some of your all's faces on some of these different civilian employees that are, are standing up. We have security officers and you have members of the crime laboratory. We also had other professional staff members of the police department. You also had a large contingency of individuals from the Department of Corrections, which is totally, has nothing to do with me in any way, shape, or form. The only thing I'm going to say on their behalf is I certainly believe they need more than three percent raise. However, what is more, what is it, three, is it thirteen, is it thirty-three? That's going to be up to the collective bargaining process, I think, they need to engage in to discover that, to find out what they can live with. What I mean out of that large budget is, is the crime lab especially, these are our college-educated members who have been bargaining for over two and a half years. It's four hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars to completely decompress their pay and get them onto a market median average to where these people are saying, they've already agreed that this would be something they can live with. Um, and they've bargained all the way through the police department. I guess my point is, is that out of all those millions of dollars, we're talking about less than one-half to fix thirty-six percent just to swipe up a pen. Where we find that for five hundred thousand dollars, I mean, I'm certainly, we'll be willing to sit down with anybody and discuss um, where we could trim some fat out of the police budget or where we could tighten our belts in some places. But that's my point, is overall, that's a very small, small number.
So, so when you guys were bargaining, uh, meeting, whatever, did the three of you, the organizations meet at the same time? Or was it individual meetings?
Yeah, so it's a good question. It started with the individual, uh, the largest bargaining was the police officers, it was about six hundred police officers. That's gun and badge, tan shirt, you know, just like me, I'm a police detective. They organized, we organized, and that was even under the Dwyer administration. Um, that was still when Chief Fitch was the chief, so that's, we've been going with that for a long time. Um, then the next step was, I think about right at two and a half years ago, maybe two and three-quarters years ago, um, the crime laboratory came forward, and there were a group of civilian members and said, listen, what do we need to do to fix this? We're, we're, we are chemists, we're biologists, we're handling firearms, we're handling dangerous drugs, uh, semen, blood, physical evidence, all these things were very important people. We can't just replace us. We can't put an ad out on Craigslist and get a chemist tomorrow. What do we need to do? Well, we engaged in the collective bargaining process with them, so that was our second bargaining unit that we organized under the Fraternal Order of Police. And then the third and final was one we just did most recently, which was the police sergeants, if that makes sense. So I guess our next step, which we're already engaging in, is trying to get, at least on the police department side. And just for clarity, I cannot speak for the, for corrections. I, I certainly believe they're entitled to that fight, and, and I just, they just, they're ineligible because they're not police department employees to, to join with us. But I believe their corrections officers are Ask Me, is there a unit if I, if I'm correct?
So with the Prop P, when you were designating funds or how you would distribute it, all three bargaining agents met, get together?
Not together, I mean, we, we are the bargaining agent for all three of those bargaining units.
Oh, you're the bargaining agent for all three?
If that makes sense, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so somebody dropped the ball and, and, and didn't give.
Somewhere when the, when the police budget went from the chief's office to you all, somewhere in the middle, that, that crime lab was left off. Now, the police officers and the sergeants have been taken care of, but the crime lab was left off. The other civilian employees weren't organized at the time, we're in the process of doing that now. But, uh, yeah, so I mean, who, is there an individual to blame? I, I don't think there's an individual, but, so. We, we, we brought there, as far as we could, yes, ma'am.
What is the amount that the chemist are asking to be, the percentage, rather, he didn't know the percentage.
So it, it, it's an average of about approximately three. It's more for some, less than others, so it's very similar to what the rest of the civilian employees are looking at. They are just as if not more underpaid than the police officers were when we engaged in this based upon the Millman Study. Um, I believe they were sixty-eight percent underpaid, I think is what the number was. I can get that to you tomorrow. I'll check my notes. Uh, the idea is, is that they were, took a market study and they sat down and said, okay, here's where we could be if we worked at Monsanto or wherever else or Anheuser-Busch. We realize we're public employees with a pension, here's where we'd like to be. And they agreed that this was the package they could live with. It's a four hundred eighty-nine thousand dollar for one year, um, increase into their, for, for payroll for thirty-six employees. It would be your biologist, your chemist, your forensic examiners, um, and then the few, they do have some clerical staff inside the crime lab. So it'd be all the employees that work underneath the umbrella of the St. Louis Crime Laboratory, St. Louis County Crime Laboratory.
Just to be clear, you're saying that the case managers, and I guess IT support, they are not organized?
Well, so case managers under, are under, uh, Department of Corrections, which has nothing to do with me. So other than, other than the fact that I would stand as a fellow county resident and taxpayer, that I do agree they need more money. I can't speak for them other than that, so, uh.
But are they organized?
And then I.
They're different.
Not that they could, the, the COs were organized and are Ask Me, I assume the correction, or the case managers could do the same, I'm not sure. They would be ineligible to join the Fraternal Order of Police because they don't work for a police agency. So, but, uh, any civilian employee inside the police department can join our organization. We can bargain on their behalf, and we've done that the three times with those units that I've discussed. So, and I know we're short on time, but I'd be happy to provide any additional information tonight or even tomorrow.
If I have a moment? Thank you, Mr. Patterson. I have a question with respect to the facilities you're talking about. I want to state for the record, couldn't agree with you more. These facilities are needed, no question about it. Every confidence, that'll be addressed in the coming year. That said, I do have some questions. One is, to your knowledge, has locations been identified for the construction of either of these new precincts?
I have heard, I, what I would only be able to tell you, Councilman, would be scuttlebutt on certain ideas. We're, we're completely, we would like to be brought. We're completely, we would like to be brought in at the phase just to be able to give some pointers, or some advice, or some sort of, be able to be part of the stakeholders because we'll be working on the facility. But no, as far as, anything is almost better than what we have. We're not, we don't really have to, we're not lobbying for a specific location or anything of that nature.
So if I understand correctly, then at least to your knowledge, no specific locations have been identified as desirable for either?
I have heard of two different locations. I heard of one possibly up near the North County Rec Pucks, another near the intersection of Grabaway and 21. I know there was some talk about possibly putting it in a county park, but that's another whole host of issues. We're open-minded to anything. What we're saying is the current privately-owned facilities are just too substandard.
And then lastly, in a similar vein, to your knowledge, have any architectural design or design firms been retained? And have any type of preliminary drawings been?
I have not heard, no, sir. I've never heard anything of that nature.
All right. Very well, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, on the chemist and the crime lab employees, if their pay proposal, you mentioned it would be $489,000?
And change, I'm using ballpark figure, yes, ma'am.
What would that bring them, I guess you say they're 68% of market rate? If, if this were to go forward, where would that bring them?
It's going to vary on position to position. I could give you the average, somebody in the crowd could probably shout it out behind me if Andy Weston. Close to average, 50th, market, yeah. So whether it's 47 or 51, I couldn't tell you exactly. It's, since you have biology, you have chemists, you have forensic individuals, the, the job varies so much that it's sort of a, an average of the different positions. The crime lab is an extraordinarily diverse working unit. That's why I think the collective bargaining process is a little bit difficult. I mean, you have people who are answering phones and just processing paperwork, and you have people that are handling dead bodies and substances that can kill you with as small as three micrograms, like carfentanil. I mean, so it's a very diverse work group of different types of responsibilities and experience.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do, Louis, excuse me, it was mentioned before that there was a matrix that was developed for the crime lab?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And do we have a copy of that matrix?
I, I'm sure, if you do not, I will make sure you have it by nine o'clock tonight.
Yeah, if you could have everyone in the council have a copy of that.
Yes, sir, that's very possible to be done.
Thank you.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
You said you might be able to identify some items in the police budget that we could shave to help find this money? Could you help us with that as well?
I can tell you that I've looked at it just arbitrarily, but I'd be happy to sit down. And I mean this, I mean, if I have to take a day off of work to do it, I'll sit down with you guys anytime you like. Everyone should have my cell phone number. I want to be a very willing, helpful participant in this, and certainly represent a large amount of stakeholders. One of the things that jumped out at me originally, and I think this, and I'm going to speak very frankly, and this may upset some people to a small degree, is that the $1 million training budget for the police department is so grossly inflated. I promise you, and I'll bet my badge and gun, we couldn't spend that money if we wanted to. That's too much. That's a million dollars in additional training. The San Luis County Police Department is the best-trained police agency in the state of Missouri as it is. With that being said, more training is always important, but at a certain point, we actually have to do our jobs. I believe the initial request for training was like $50,000 from the chief, and that's been inflated, inflated, inflated. And I think that's because some members of the council may want to see a seven-figure just to hang a hat on it, which is, I understand it's politics, but I'm telling you, we will not be able to spend it.
No, it's not politics.
Okay. I'm telling you, we won't, there's, it's nearly impossible to spend that much money in training. So it's nice to say we're at a million new dollars, but at the end of the day, folks, we have to patrol the streets, so. A million dollars in training, I mean, you could cut that budget in half and make it $500,000. Use that other $500,000 to satisfy the crime lab, and you would still have an extraordinarily impressive training schedule, so, okay?
If you have any other suggestions, just send them along.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
Thanks. Next speaker?
Final speaker this evening is Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things to mention. County Executive Stinger has been saying the previous county auditors have conducted either eight audits or eight to 10 audits a year. I couldn't find anything to confirm that, so I asked the Director of Communications, Cardell Whitlock, if he could identify just the audits conducted last year by the previous auditor. No response. It seems what Mr. Stinger is saying about the audits simply isn't true. According to the county auditor's website, only two audits were done last year, six in 2015 and two in 2014. Also, the county executive was on the radio last week bragging about his big audit. He promised a top-to-bottom forensic audit during his 2014 campaign. It was also going to be done in his first 100 days. It wasn't a top-to-bottom audit, it wasn't a forensic audit, and it took more than two years to complete. Mr. Stinger also seems to be claiming the previous county auditor uncovered the millions of dollars that were being embezzled several years ago in the Health Department. That simply isn't true. On this evening's agenda, Bill Number 2183 is up for final passage. It will allow the prosecuting attorney to still collect two pensions, one from the state and one from the county, though the one from the county would be reduced. County Executive Stinger wanted his supporter, Bob McCullough, to get two full pensions for, quote, "A lifetime of faithful service to the public." I would not agree with that description. Many of Mr. McCullough's decisions have to do with politics rather than the law. A good example is his investigation into whether the new county auditor meets the qualifications given in the county charter for accounting experience. As long as the charter does not define accounting experience, it can mean just about anything. If Bob McCullough wants to enforce the county charter, he might look at all of the county council meetings the county executive has missed. The charter mandates that he attend the meetings. Or how about the continuing violations of the state sunshine law by the county executive? Mr. McCullough does nothing about that either. He also does nothing when school districts and other governmental entities unlawfully spend tax dollars to campaign for tax increases and other ballot measures, a basic corruption of the democratic process. Almost every school district in St. Louis County does it because Bob McCullough fails to enforce the law. Also, the McCullough Campaign Committee has contributed $100,000 of in-kind services to the county executive's campaign, but no one knows what it was for. I think the bill should be held until there is an accounting of the contributions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tom. That concludes our public forum. Please proceed with the introduction of bills.
Bill Number 306, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant above the $75,000 from the Annie E. Casey Foundation appropriating the same for support of the juvenile detention alternatives initiative program in the family court, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 307, introduced by Councilmember Harder, and ordinance declaring the public necessity of and providing for the establishment of a public road designated as Lewis Road, lying entirely within and incorporated St. Louis County, directing the acquisition of real property therefor, and authorizing the county executive to execute contracts, agreements, and related documents CR-1285. Bill Number 308, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter 612, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance, 1974, amended St. Louis County, St. Louis County Air Pollution Control Code by repealing and reenacting Section 612.260, and by adding and enacting two new sections to said chapter all pertaining to various fees related to asbestos inspections. Bill Number 309, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Donna Lynn Horst, Ph.D., for evaluation of the 18th year of the Choice Substances, Choices Substance Abuse Recovery Program at the Buzz Westfall Justice Center. Bill Number 310, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Donna Lynn Horst, Ph.D., to complete the evaluation of the first 15 years of the St. Louis County Municipal Mental Health Court. Bill Number 311, introduced by Councilmembers Wassinger and Tricus, and ordinance amending Ordinance Number 24,442 by repealing and reenacting Section 3, pertaining to a contract and subsequent renewals with Backyard Barbecue Incorporated for food concessions at two county park facilities. Bill Number 312, introduced by Councilmember Erby, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a license agreement with Metropolitan Park Recreation District and the Missouri Highway Transportation Commission for construction and maintenance of a trail connector along the Maylene Greenway. Bill Number 313, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 204, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance, 1974, amended the retirement plans by repealing Sections 204.020, 204.070, 204.080, 204.100, 204.110, 204.115, 204.120, 204.140, 204.152, 204.155, 204.160, 204.170, 204.185, 204.195, 204.270, 204.290, and adding two new sections, 204.01, 012, and 204.061 pertaining to the retirement plan. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Perfection of bills.
Bill Number 241, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Drop from the order of business, and that will be the order. This bill deals with the ICE complex in Creve Court Park. We know now that they have another location. And we'll turn our conversation to restoration of the park property to open space use.
Bill Number 289, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill Number 289.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, Bill Number 289 is perfected.
Bill Number 290, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill Number 290.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carries, Bill Number 290 is perfected.
Bill Number 291, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill Number 291.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, Bill Number 291 is perfected.
Bill Number 292, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill Number 292.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, Bill Number 292 is perfected.
Bill Number 293, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect Bill Number 293.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, Bill Number 293 is perfected.
Bill Number 294, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill Number 294.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, Bill Number 294 is perfected.
Bill Number 295, introduced by Councilmember Tricus.
Move to perfect Bill Number 295.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, Bill Number 295 is perfected.
Bill Number 296, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Hold on, the order of business, that will be the order. I hope to discuss this at our parks budget hearing in the next couple of days.
Bill Number 297, introduced by Councilmember Tricus.
Move to perfect Bill Number 297, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Bill Number 297 is perfected.
Bill Number 298, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill Number 298.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, Bill Number 298 is perfected.
Bill Number 299, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill Number 299.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, Bill Number 299 is perfected.
Bill Number 300, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill Number 300.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, Bill Number 300 is perfected.
Bill Number 301, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill Number 301.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, Bill Number 301 is perfected.
Bill Number 302, introduced by Councilmember Tricus.
Move to perfect Bill Number 302, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, Bill Number 302 is perfected.
Bill Number 303, introduced by Councilmember Tricus.
Please hold on the order of business.
Bill Number 303 is held.
Bill Number 304, introduced by Councilmember Harder. Mr. Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 304, introduced by Councilmember Harder, and ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance in District Mass by changing the boundaries of the NU non-urban district, the FP NU floodplain non-urban district, the M3 plant industrial district, and the FM, FP M3 floodplain plant industrial district, and approving the application of preliminary plans for development in the M3 plant industrial district and the FP M3 floodplain plant industrial district of attractive land, subject to conditions PC 34-17 Golden Triangle Concrete Company.
I just want to add that the reason for the substitution is, the original bill had some errors in it, and the new substitution will correct those errors going forward. So, move to perfect that bill, move to perfect the substitute.
Move to adopt.
Are you going to adopt, okay. Please adopt the substitute bill for Bill 304.
Second.
Before we vote, can you just tell us the nature of the changes? Just summarize them, I don't, you don't need to go through them in detail.
Yeah, the email I got, it says, "The planning department identified an omission in Bill 304, which only rezoned a parcel of the property. The attached substitute bill corrects the omission to add the approval of preliminary plans to the approval of the change in zoning."
Okay. All in favor of adoption of substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 304?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 304 is adopted. Would you like to perfect?
Yes, let's perfect substitute bill for Bill 304.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 304 is perfected.
Bill Number 305, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please move to perfect Bill Number 305.
Second.
Do you want a hearing on this?
We're going to have, we're going to work out some things before we finalize this. I'll report back.
Uh, work out some things in language of the bill?
Language and communication between the existing energy board, so.
So you'll be offering a substitute for this?
Possibly, if there's some changes that need to be made.
You want, don't you think we should adopt the substitute before we?
I don't have the substitute language first, so. We can, we can hold this if you'd like.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see the sub. I, I think this is, I mean, I want you to get a vote on your bill. I think it's a complex issue and, and probably deserves some dialogue. We've been working on this for a couple of years.
Yeah, let's go ahead and hold Bill 305 at this point.
Thank you, Bill Number 305 is held. Final passage.
Bill Number 183, introduced by Councilmember Erby. Please hold on the order of business.
Bill Number 183 is held.
Bill Number 262, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill Number 262 is held.
Bill Number 283, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill Number 283.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tricus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number 283, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 283 is finally passed.
Bill Number 284, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill Number 284.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tricus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number 284, there are seven ayes.
Bill, uh, Bill Number 284 is finally passed.
Bill Number 285, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill Number 285.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tricus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number 285, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 285 is finally passed.
Bill Number 286, introduced by Councilmember Harder for Councilmember Tricus.
Move for final passage of Bill Number 286. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tricus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number 286, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 286 is finally passed.
Bill Number 287, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Move to final passage of Bill Number 287.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.